Okay, welcome everyone to the Hillsborough Township Planning Board Meeting, June 1st, 2023. Please join me in a salute to the flag.
Let's engage to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty for all.
Please be advised this meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5, the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975, otherwise known as Sunshine Law. Notice of the 2023 Annual Meeting Schedule has been provided to the officially designated newspapers, township clerk, posted on township's website, and available here at the Hillsborough Township Municipal Complex. In addition, application documents have been made available on the Township Civic Clerk website, and complete applications files are available in the Planning and Zoning Department for inspection in accordance with the public meeting notice. That may have a, excuse me, roll call of board members and also board and township professionals, please.
Mr. Estag, Mr. Doug Corr, absent. Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mr. Pezen?
Here.
Mr. Scobbo?
Here.
Mr. Radowitz?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Committeeman Ciccarelli?
Here.
Mayor Lapone?
Here.
Vice Chair Julian?
Here.
Chair Sarachi?
Here.
Mr. Coys?
Here.
Mr. Bernstein?
Here.
Mr. Mahew?
Here.
And Mr. Tolson and myself are here.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Do we not have any consideration for meeting minutes? No resolutions, no planning board business, and no consideration of ordinances, so...
Yes, we do. We have a consideration of ordinances.
Really?
Yes, we do.
Okay, my copy, oh, my copy down here has it. My online copy does not.
More first, David Moore.
Okay. I got it. Well, I see it here. Okay. So I stand corrected, so we do have a consideration of ordinance. This is ordinance 2023-08, an ordinance amending Chapter 188 Land Use and Development, Article 1 Title, Purpose, Definition, Section 188-3 Words and Terms Defined, and Article 5 Districts and Standards, Section 188-106, the I-1, I-2, and I-3 Light Industrial District, Section 188-107, the GI General Industrial District, and Section 188-107.1 LI Light Industrial District of the Code of the Township of Hillsborough, Somerset County, New Jersey, to remove warehousing, shipping, and receiving facilities as principal permitted uses in these districts. So, Mr. Coys.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Planning Board, and General Public. Ordinance 2023-08 removes warehousing, shipping, and receiving from the definition of industrial or office park, and removes warehousing, shipping, and receiving as a principal permitted use from the I-1, I-2, and I-3 districts, the GI district, and LI district. Hillsborough Township has experienced a high volume of warehouse applications due to the rise in e-commerce and consumer expectations for same-day delivery services perpetuating demand for large-scale warehousing for goods and distribution. These industries generate economic activity, jobs, and ratables, but it should not be at the expense of the public good. Many of the applications are located in close proximity to sensitive land uses, including environmentally sensitive residential zones. Such developments would produce negative impacts to the public, including noise, traffic, and air pollution. The rapid growth of warehouse development has affected the state, and thus the New Jersey Planning Commission Warehouse Development has affected the state, and thus the New Jersey Planning Commission issued a report Distribution, Warehousing, and Goods Movement Guidelines, which provides guidance to local governments to control warehouse development. The township has the right to protect the public health, safety, and promote the general welfare, and preserve the natural landscape of the community, which directly aligns with multiple goals in the township's master plan.
Thank you. Mr. Bernstein, anything to add?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Board members, comments? Okay. So just to clarify, we're not actually taking a vote to amend the ordinance. This is strictly a formality for the planning board to either make recommendations to the draft ordinance change, or to recommend to the township committee, the governing body, to vote on them as is. So, and with that, I, you know, just will just make comment that I think this is probably the cleanest way to be moving forward, rather than trying to work through, or, you know, zoning districts, you know, one by one. But by no means that does that mean that such applications would not be permitted to be filed going forward. It's just, it's going to redirect them to the zoning board, who would need to make determination whether or not that application and the use would be appropriate, again, depending on where the application would be located. Also, this does not have any bearing on any applications that have been already filed or already active at this point.
Those applications which have been deemed complete.
Deemed complete, okay. I knew you were going to correct me. I wasn't going to get away with it. Okay. So...
Motion.
It's open?
No.
No, I don't need to, okay. So, motion to not adopt, but to recommend the ordinance as drafted to the township committee for their approval, for their vote.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second it.
Consistent with the master plan and a recommendation to the governing body for action to be taken.
Okay. So that, roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Pezen?
Yes.
Mr. Scobbo?
Yes.
Mr. Radowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Committeeman Ciccarelli?
Yes.
Mayor Lapone?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes. Okay. Next, it's business from the floor for matters not on this evening's agenda, and as I've said in the past, please no comments with regards to warehouses directly or indirectly, since we have that as part of this evening's agenda, but also other active applications, and it's also just to be fair to those applicants to get those comments on the record during their application hearings. So if anyone would like to come up, comment that matters not on this evening's agenda, please come to the mic, state your name and address for the record. I see no one jumping up, so we are going to move on to applications for this evening's public hearing. Weston Road LLC, file number 22-PB-03-MSPV, with the time of decision of June 30th, 2023. These applications continued from the May 11th meeting this year without further notice. And yes, objectors, take your seats on one side and... So, Mr. Ogradnik, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, members of the board. First of all, I applaud you for the ordinance that you had recommended. I think it's appropriate, and I applaud that effort. We're here tonight on behalf of our applicant, Weston Road LLC. This is the sixth night of public hearings. There's only one update for an outside agency approval. The application did receive Somerset County Planning Board approval via letter dated May 24th, 2023, which was uploaded on Civic Clerk, I believe, earlier this week. With me tonight, if you recall from our prior hearing, Gary Dean of Dolan &amp; Dean Engineering. He's our professional traffic engineer, who had finished his direct testimony in cross-examination from the objector's attorneys, who is here to finish a cross-examination of his traffic testimony for members of the public. Our second witness is Jim Scott. He's our warehousing consultant. He's going to answer questions related to operations of three PL warehouses, and specifically anticipated operations at this site. Our third witness is Steve Rendusty. He's our licensed architect. We also have Tom Offenard. He's our environmental consultant. To briefly go over the environmental impact statement and answer any questions, as his testimony was previously requested by the board, we also have, time permitting, Keenan Hughes, our professional planner. So unless there are any legal questions, I would ask that we proceed to the conclusion of our traffic testimony.
Before we do, Mr. Chairman, I think we need, for the purpose of the record, to have objectors counsel noted, and I do have several board member eligibility. Gentlemen.
Good evening, board members. Michael Sinkovich from Lieberman, Blacker &amp; Sinkovich on behalf of Hearthstone.
And Jordan Ash from Recker Danzig, also representing the Hearthstone Homeroes Association.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, for purposes of the record, I have received three certifications by absent board member examination of record eligibility to vote relative to tonight's application. They have all viewed the video recording of the May 11th, 2023 meeting. The last hearing on this application, as Mr. Ogradnik indicated, they are Mr. Radowitz, Mr. Vice Chairman Julian, and Mr. Pezen. They are all eligible to participate in this evening's hearing.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
So, is there any testimony that you'd like to supplement from your prior testimony?
As I, oh, Gary Dean.
Just for the purpose of the record, remind, Mr. Dean, you're still under oath.
Thank you. Yes, Gary Dean, recognizing I'm still under oath, thank you. Mr. Bernstein, I believe you asked me one question that I was unable to answer at the prior hearing, and it pertains to the volume of tractor-trailer trucks that we observed from our counts along Weston Road. Does that...
Actually, it was not my question. I believe it was Mr. Tarantino's, and usually I'll be happy to take, you know, credit for things that whether I touched or not, but...
Then my recollection isn't as good as it used to be. Thank you.
It was the question you recollected. It was the person who asked it, you didn't.
Certainly. And to answer that question, from our traffic counts, and again, to refresh the board's recollection and the public, our traffic counts were conducted during peak commuter hours. That would be coincident with typical arrival and departure activity associated with the use. And while we had identified in the morning peak hour between 7:30 and 8:30, a total of 32 trucks on Weston Road traveling right in front of the site and Hearthstone. Of those 32 trucks total, there were four tractor-trailers, two in the eastbound direction and two in the westbound direction. In the afternoon peak hour, which was from 5:00 to 6:00, out of 18 trucks, four of them were tractor-trailers, all traveling eastbound toward Manville. And that is all I have in the way of clarification from last month's hearing.
Thank you. So we're still open to public? Okay. So we are still open to public. If anyone from the public would like to question or cross-examine this witness on his prior testimony, please come to the mic, state your name and address for the record, please.
Brian Tarantino, Fairfield Lane. I thought I would jump up since I was in the middle of questioning Mr. Dean, just to finish up. And just to give you guys, you know, a heads up, I'm going to be asking a few questions about generation rate, and then a few questions about impact. So that's where I'm going with my questions. So, Mr. Dean, thank you for the follow-up on the number of tractor-trailers that were in your count. I have a question about the, what I recall is that last time you testified, that the average trucks per day were estimated at 78 trips per day. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Do you have the ITE sheet for that?
No, I looked it up on a, on the program that generates it at the last hearing. I do not have the sheet.
Okay, so it's not in any of your reports?
It is not.
Okay. So, and I also recall that you testified that your, the peak rate was three trips in the morning and five trips in the afternoon. Is that right?
It's four in the evening.
Four.
Correct. And that was for a larger warehouse, but we're in the ballpark, three to four truck trips, consisting of one arriving in the morning, two exiting, and two arriving, and two exiting in the evening.
So I'm just curious, if you divided that 78 by 24, I did the math ahead of time over dinner, that comes to 3.25 trips per day on average, spread out across the entire all 24 hours. Does that sound right? I'll make it a question.
I'll answer your questions, but go ahead.
Yeah. So that's very close to your peak, that's very close to your peak hourly rate, isn't that right?
I...
In fact, it exceeds your morning peak hourly rate.
I haven't done that math, but sure, I'll go along with you.
And if you, do you recall Mr. Arive's testimony about his hours of operation?
I do.
So for the, for the, during the week, his daily hours of operation, do you recall the number?
No.
It was 15. It was 7:00 AM to, I have it written down somewhere, but it was 15 hours a day. So if you divided 78 by 15, you'd get something much higher than your peak rates.
Yeah, but we're not dividing it by 15, nor are we dividing it by 78. The applicant has testified as to his specific operation and the number of trucks, which is half of ITE, so the math actually works.
Okay. So your 78, I'm just back on your 78 average, on an average day, we would see 78 truck trips per day.
No, that's incorrect. That's not what the applicant testified to.
No, no, I'm asking about your testimony. You testified that the average number of trips, you, your report talks about the peak, but then you said, hey, I looked it up, and it was 78 truck trips per day on average.
Correct, in response to your question not pertaining to this application.
Okay, not pertaining to this application, I don't understand.
Correct. This applicant testified as to the number of trucks they would use. It is less than ITE.
Right.
You asked me about ITE. I answered that question.
Right.
So all of your hypotheticals deviate from the testimony specific to this application.
Right. Yeah, your traffic impact is used the three trucks per day, the three trucks in the peak hour in the morning, and the four trucks in the peak hour in the evening. Is that correct?
It's truck trips, but yes.
Truck trips, sorry. And yet that rate is lower than the average truck trips that you quoted, even if that 78 is divided evenly across 24 hours of operation.
Yeah, I'm not understanding your question. We're conflating apples and oranges. You're asking me about ITE, which is the standard practice. In response to the questions that the board had, as to this applicant's operation, we have refined from ITE and given you the data that pertains to the applicant's operation. So we can't keep co-mingling those. It's two different sets of data.
Right. So you use three, let me, I'll go back, okay? You use three trips per day, three trips in the morning at the peak hour, and four trips in the evening in order, from the ITE, from the ITE estimate?
Correct.
In order to calculate what kind of traffic impact the site would likely have, given all the other traffic that goes on around the site. Isn't that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And then your rates, I guess what I'm suggesting, and I'm not supposed to be making statements, but I'm trying to make it clear, the, your three truck trips in the morning is lower than your average rate in a whole day divided by 24 hours.
No, that's totally incorrect. Again, we're not talking about ITE. If you recall the testimony of the applicant...
No, I'm not talking about the applicant. I'm sorry to interrupt you. I'm not talking about the applicant. I'm talking about, you said, I estimated 78 truck trips per day, and I said, do you have the ITE report for that? You said, no, but I looked it up on a reference.
Correct, that's what I did.
Okay. And so I'm questioning whether your three truck trips' peak rate is correct.
Yes, it is.
Well, I'm questioning that because that's lower, that peak rate is lower than if you took your average rate and divided by 24.
Sure. I think I've answered that question, Mr. Chairman. I don't know how I can explain it any better. We used, we don't use daily traffic numbers in these assessments, in these impact studies. We have focused on the peak hours. In response to your question, I entertained the hypothetical of ITE and gave you that 24-hour number. It's larger than what the applicant has testified to.
Sure.
So, that's why I can't keep going down that rabbit hole.
Okay. I guess let me ask one more question along that line. Would you, is it reasonable to expect that your peak rate is higher than your average rate? Is that a fair statement?
Per hour? Sure.
Okay, good. I was wanting to pull up, I wanted to finish the questions that I had related to the ITE chart, where you got the three truck trips per hour, peak rate. I have it on my laptop, if we could project it, if that's okay, because it was a little complicated to explain, and people were not, like, I felt like I was speaking another language for people. Is that all right, if we could project that? It's from the report. I'm not introducing any new evidence.
Mr. Tarantino.
Oh, I'm sorry, from the, from the Dolan &amp; Dean traffic report, I believe it was dated July 2022?
Correct.
So I have it up if...
If it's from, as long, we have the representation, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, that this is from an existing report that is currently in the possession of the board. I don't recall Mr. either LaMbe Dozier, Mr. Ogradnik, and indicate whether or not we've entered this as a marked exhibit or not.
It hasn't been submitted as a marked exhibit. Only the aerials and the site plans have been submitted as marked exhibits, is my understanding, but I further understand that everything that's on Civic Clerk is part of the record. If we can, if that's not the case, then we'll move in, everything.
We'll mark it. I guess, I guess the question was, Michael, I couldn't remember whether we had marked the entire report or not for the purposes of the record. Mr. Tarantino, for purposes of record, we're going to mark this as applicant four. Can you indicate for the record what page number and what report, unless Mr. Dean would like to?
Okay.
What page number and what report you are asking the board to review, as well as the public and council for both sides?
So the, I'll get back on the mic in a second. So this is the report, Traffic Impact Analysis for Terrace Industrial Park Proposed Warehouse, dated July 22nd, 2022. It's, I took it off of the Civic Clerk. And these pages aren't numbered?
Pull it, pull it, pull it down. First of all, pull it down, that page. Not that far down. For the purpose of the record, this is a document entitled Warehousing Truck Trip Ends V1,000 Square Feet GFA. Truck Trip Generation Per 1,000 Square Foot GFA. I heard somebody indicate there is a page number on it.
Is there?
I didn't see that. I thought I, as I said, I'm hearing voices again. So there is no page number on it, but this is part of the Dolan &amp; Dean report.
So it's, and it's page, it's about page 33, if anybody else wants to try to find it.
Yeah, it's page 33 of the PDF that we have.
Okay. So, Mr. Dean, I was asking you about this chart, and I was suggesting that the number that you took off of this is an average. The question I was asking is, are there, so each X represents what on this chart?
Each X... Each X represents a data point for a particular building size and the actual number of trucks that were counted in the morning peak hour, one hour falling somewhere between 7:00 and 9:00 AM in a general urban or suburban location.
Okay, thank you. And, and the regression line, that dotted line, is calculated, I mean, I'm not going to ask you to give me the equation, but, you know, from a layman's terms, how is that line calculated?
It's not. There is no equation. It is a plot of the average, looking at all of the building sizes and data that's available.
So you're saying it was, it was kind of, since there weren't enough points, or for whatever reason, you know, the regression rules, it was more of an eyeball, like, here's the...
I didn't draw that line. That comes from the reference source, which is ITE, but it follows the calculated average trip rate of 0.02 per thousand square feet.
Okay, thank you. And, and so the, so that, that average takes into consideration some warehouses that are at zero truck trips per, per that hour. Is that correct?
I don't, I don't...
The Xs that are...
See any data point?
There are Xs that are on the, that are on the X-axis?
Correct, I see that, yes.
Okay. And it also takes into consideration warehouses that are much higher, right? So for instance, there's one up there by the 15 on the Y-axis, 15 trips per hour, and that would be a smaller warehouse, isn't that correct?
Correct.
And there's others that are quite high up there. Let me move this. So these would also represent warehouses that have higher-than-average truck, peak truck trips per, in the morning peak hour.
They're data points. For example, a building that's 2.5 million square feet generated 25 truck trips, all the way in the upper right-hand corner of that exhibit. So it is a compilation of studies that have been done at warehouses and the number of trucks that came in and out.
Right. So each X, though, represents a warehouse?
Correct.
Okay.
A study of a warehouse. It could have been the same warehouse, but...
Fair. A study of a warehouse. It's, thank you for getting me right on that. So, so the three truck trips in the morning peak is essentially an average peak, averaging all these other studies. Isn't that correct?
I disagree with that, in that we need to look at the data relevant for the size of the building we're considering. So if we look at a building, and again, in this example, if we look at the bottom, I know the board can't see it, but at the very bottom, when we first did this assumption, we, it was a long time ago, we assumed the building was 158,000 square feet. The applicant has since amended it to reduce it by 28,000 from what this analysis shows, but it still would be roughly three trips. That doesn't change our findings.
Okay. Yes, and so what I'm, what I'm asking, though, is that that three, even if it was corrected to the right square footage, it represents a weight, essentially a weighted, not essentially, it is, in fact, a weighted average of the data points on this plot. Isn't that correct?
Of all of the data points, that's correct.
Yes, okay. So, so it doesn't at all represent a true maximum from the building, from, that could, could occur from the proposed building. Is that correct?
No, I don't, I don't understand what you're asking.
So the three, even though you estimated as, as the peak hourly rate, it doesn't represent a maximum rate from the building for a particular hour?
When you say "from the building," I don't understand what you're asking.
From a warehouse of the size that's proposed.
No, there are no data point, well, there are two data points for a building roughly of this size, and one of them is exactly three. There's another one for a larger building that was two, and then as we get up to maybe 200,000 square feet, it's consistently three, and so forth. So all of the data points clustered in the lower left-hand corner of this exhibit are showing three trips. I conceded very early on that there was one outlier in all of those data points for a tiny building. I don't know what size it is. It might be 10,000 square feet, that did 15 trips in an hour.
Right. I don't want to belabor this, so I'll move on, but the, these data points that are above the line, that are to the left, above and to the left of the line, represent warehouses that are, on a weighted average basis, higher than your, on a square footage basis. Isn't that true?
Again, I'm, they are a data point for a smaller building that generated more trucks. I can't answer it any better. There are larger buildings that generated no trucks. There are larger buildings that generated the same trucks. There are smaller buildings that generated two and three truck trips.
So if we wanted to understand the maximum number of trucks that... So if we wanted to understand the maximum number of trucks that a, that a building like the one being proposed could generate, maybe this isn't a great chart to figure that out, is that, would you agree with that?
Well, and that is why at the last hearing, I introduced data that was compiled for warehouses in New Jersey that all are lower than the I T E projections.
Given the fact that the chart shows smaller warehouses generating more trips, that's okay. Since, no, I'm sorry.
Could we? I haven't, nah.
Okay. Since the chart shows warehouses that generate all different kinds of rates, some higher, some lower, relative to the, the square footage, this isn't a great way to estimate the maximum number of trucks that the building could generate. Do you agree with that?
Well, that, that's why this board asked for testimony from the applicant as to their use. So all of this discussion pertains to I T E, very theoretical, in the absence of knowing an end user, this is the, the source upon which we would rely for these projections. But it has no relevance in this application, because this board has heard specific testimony pertaining to truck operations from the applicant.
Right, but assuming that, you know, we're, we're, if we were concerned about the maximum, the impact that this building could have on the neighborhood and on the roads, we wouldn't, since the, since the person leasing the building could change, we want to be thinking about other ways of estimating maximum, isn't that, is that correct?
Well, I, I look at the data, and I see one outlier. I also see what appears to be a half a dozen that are all consistent with three. So I'd want to know more about the outlier. I'm not going to rely on one random data point that generated 15 trips, which by the way is seven in and eight out, not a big volume over the course of an hour, as to whether that's applicable to this operation.
Well, there's quite a few that are above the line.
For bigger buildings, correct.
Right, but on a per-square-footage basis, it, it's, it's a lot more than the three trips per the 140,000 square feet, isn't that correct?
Sure. Let me put it this way, three trips an hour is one every 20 minutes, 20 trips an hour, which is the higher one, is one every three. It's not going to affect capacity, it's not going to affect traffic operations, it's still too low a volume. So, I mean, we can continue, but I'm still going to submit that it's a very low volume, and it's a permitted use.
Okay. If you wanted to estimate, since you're a traffic expert, if you wanted to estimate the maximum number of trucks that could be generated by a building like this, how would you do it?
I, I don't look at the maximum, I look at what the building...
I'm just, I'm asking as an expert, you said you've been doing this for 40 years, I'm asking for your expert opinion, how would you do it?
Sure. I look at the I T E data, and I look at the data points that are closest to the, to the size of the building that is being proposed, and I, and I look at the grouping of that data. I don't look at an outlier and say, wow, there was one site that, one site out of six, seven, eight that did more. I, I look at that data. I don't go looking at million-square-foot buildings. So then I temper that with other studies that have been done in our office, and compare that to I T E. I, I don't look at maximum, even if I looked at maximums, my testimony and my conclusions won't change. 15 trips per hour for trucks versus three, the delta of 12 is insignificant from a traffic perspective.
Okay.
Has no effect on operations. So I think I've answered your question as to the maximum, as to this data.
Actually, you haven't, but that's okay. You're saying, you're telling me that maximum's not important to you, that you don't ever do that, and, and you would, you would still rely on this data, which is, as we've established in the last hearing, and I don't want to repeat it, because I don't want to ask again, because I don't, I know it's not appropriate, but we established that those are, are average rates, rather than, you know, they're, you pick a particular day, rather than lots of days, so that you could pick the largest day.
No, I've, I've looked at this, and even if I accepted your conclusion of 15 truck trips instead of my three, it doesn't change. So I've looked at the maximum, I've considered it.
It doesn't change.
We have, we have great levels of service on this road, so none of my conclusions will change over a difference of one truck, one extra truck every five minutes. It's not going to affect anything.
I'll, I'll move on, I, I, we'll leave that there. So you, last time, you testified that the, that the route that trucks would take, coming into the facility, would be from Port Elizabeth, and come down Route 78, onto 206, and in through, I guess Falcon Road, is that correct?
Falcon or Camplain to Sunnymead, correct.
Okay. Now, is it, is it, is it likely that all of the trips would come from Port Elizabeth, or are there, is it, you know, from a traffic, from a trucking point of view, those trucks could come from other ports as well?
That, that was not my recollection of the applicant's testimony. There's also outbound trucks, but the inbound trucks, where, as I understood, were from the port.
Right. And would there be anything that would stop those trucks? So from the port could mean from, from Elizabeth, but could also mean from Staten Island, isn't that right?
I, I'm not a shipping expert, I...
And is there anything that would require those trucks to go down 78 and 206, or is it?
No.
Okay, so those trucks could, could arrive at the site in any number of routes, isn't that right?
Correct.
Okay. And even if the, the, Mr. Arif decided to source his, his shipping through Port of Philadelphia, for instance, then they would come in a much different direction, isn't that right?
Correct.
Okay. So saying they all come down 78 and then 206, and that's the route, is probably not the whole picture.
Objection, you're mischaracterizing the testimony of Mr. Dean.
So I, I noticed that your, your report is centered on the impact of the, of the trucks and the cars on traffic, on the, on the flow of traffic. Isn't that right? That's the impact that you guys are, that you were looking at?
Yes.
Okay. And it seemed, if I'm, if I'm, if I'm recalling correctly, you were looking at the delta, that's all right, we don't, we don't need that anymore, so thank you, I appreciate it, though, that you were looking at the delta between the current state or currently, current observed rates, and the, and the build condition, right?
No.
No? What were you looking at, then?
The difference between the future traffic conditions if the site were not built, compared to those conditions if the site were built.
Okay, so, and, and I think that we established last time, and I don't want to repeat, but I, I believe that you said that you did not consider the development that's been approved on, on Hamilton Road, Toll Brothers, development. I believe you said you did not consider that, is that right?
I, I didn't consider it specifically, I did consider background traffic growth, and subsequent to the last hearing, when you asked me that question, I obtained a copy of the traffic study for the enclave at Royst Brook. It was a study prepared by Langen Associates, and as I expected, the majority of their site traffic goes to and from the east, on what they called Somerset Courthouse Road, I know it as River Road, but there is a minor amount of traffic from that community that continues east, excuse me, west on Hamilton Road, and of that traffic, the amount that filters its way up to Sunnymead and Weston, would be captured within the background traffic growth rate that we used.
So you're able to make that assessment without any calculations, you could, this is, this development is 100 and, 174 houses, you're able to make that assessment just by, by sight?
Yes.
Do you need to do?
No.
You don't need to do any calculations?
I do not.
Oh, wow, okay. And even though it's less than two miles?
I'm going to object, it's beyond the scope of direct examination. Langen's not here.
It really speaks to not only considering...
Are you making a statement, or do you have a question, Mr. Tarantino?
I'm, I'm responding to your objection.
Well, I think that's for Mr. Bernstein. We're going to talk about the Langen report?
We're not going to get into a discussion of the Langen report. Your client answered the question, Mr. Tarantino asked him, was he aware of it, was he aware of the traffic situation? I believe the answer is he believed, correct, and Mr. Dean, I'm sure will correct me if I'm wrong, that he did not believe it would have, it would have little to no impact on this application related to the traffic coming off of the proposed enclave development. And with that, Mr. Tarantino, I would suggest you move on.
Okay. Mr. Dean, did you consider the M and M development, also on Hamilton Road that's been approved?
I did not.
Okay. Are you aware of the, of the traffic conditions there, and the number of houses that they're planning for that, for that track?
No, I, I look at developments that are in the vicinity of this particular site. I did not do a township-wide traffic study and try to capture every single vehicle that might wind up on Weston Road in front of this site.
Well, that development is two miles away, not, it's not township-wide. It's a, that development is proposed and approved for two miles away from the Weston Road facility.
Sure, and, and I'll stay by my testimony that, much like the Toll Brothers project, the amount of traffic that ultimately works its way up to Weston Road is not going to be of a significant volume to affect my conclusions. That is precisely why we use a background traffic growth, is to capture those more remote development applications.
And, and you're able to make that assessment, do you know how many houses or residences that the M and M development is, is approved?
I do not, I do not.
So you're able to make that assessment without knowing, without knowing that?
Yes, correct.
Wow, okay. Just for the record, it's 480.
Okay. Let's just go, continue with questions.
So besides, and then your assessment of whether it's, it's acceptable, or there's going to be negligible impact on, on the surrounding roadways, is based on, is based on, on the comparison of the future no-build to the future build, isn't that correct?
Correct.
And it's the comparison of the, the rating, like you said, the, the report card of the no-build versus the report card of the build, isn't that correct?
Yes.
And, and so what was the report card for the no-build?
That was level of service B, as in Boy, at Boyd Boulevard, and then at Sunnymead and Weston. Level of service B as well, and I covered this at the last hearing, level of service C at Falcon, none of those levels of service change with the addition of the site traffic.
Did, does your report consider any other impacts of, of truck or car traffic on, on the area?
I, I don't know what you're asking.
I'm asking if you, besides the impact on traffic, does your report consider any other impacts?
I'm a traffic engineer, I specifically evaluate traffic impacts, so again, I'll, what is the question?
It's well-established that trucks have a much higher, a much more lethal accident rate. Did you evaluate...
Objection, that, that statement lacks foundation.
Did you evaluate the impact of, of, of traffic accidents and hazards to, hazards to the neighborhood from the increase in truck traffic from this building?
I, I've evaluated the effect on traffic operations associated with an increase of traffic with this application. I have not evaluated any guess at what, how safety might be affected.
Okay. And have you, have you looked at the impact of the, an increase in road repairs that would be required from an increase in truck traffic?
No.
And how about noise impacts on neighborhoods?
That's outside of my expertise.
Okay, and how about air pollution?
Again, same.
Okay. So, safe to say that you just looked at traffic operation?
That is my profession, yes.
Okay, great. So I, I guess my last question is, did you evaluate the capability of, of bridges and other, other road structures on the ability to, to take the increased in truck volume?
When this property was zoned for the use, that is something the planning board and governing body would have considered. You can't say, hey, let's put an industrial use on a piece of property without having the infrastructure to accommodate it. So that is not my responsibility to do, so no, I didn't do anything beyond that.
Okay. So if there was a bridge somewhere that, that the trucks would go over, might not be able to handle it?
Then it would be restricted already, and I know of no such restrictions.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Here's the next gentleman coming up, but while he's making up, I just had a quick question with regards to the, the road, the width of the road. Any impact or determination about whether or not the roadway would be recommended to be widened, or that the applicant would need to do that to accommodate turn radiuses?
Understood. The applicant has proposed to widen Weston Road across their frontage, beyond that limit, no, we have not ascertained or considered any other widening.
Okay. Your... My name is Bob Leacy, 37, Onka Drive. Go back to that question, you're only talking about in front of your property, but you're saying that the access to this property will be through Sunnymead and Falcon Road, and there's nothing consideration for safety analysis on, on there?
Sure. This is a permitted use, which means we're supposed to build a warehouse or, or an industrial building on this property. We can't use it for a park, we can't use it for housing. It's supposed to be used for an industrial use. So this applicant has the right to rely on that designation, and to rely on the infrastructure that serves this site. So we didn't create the zoning, we're just reacting to it. So I, I didn't do a safety study to look at every road in the township, and bear in mind, these roads all serve trucks today. So we're not doing anything new that already doesn't exist on this road system.
Let me ask you a question, okay. On your, on your traffic study, you, you stated that you did a traffic study from the driveway of the ware, proposed warehouse?
We, we did a study at the driveways to the warehouse, at Boyd Boulevard, at Sunnymead and Weston, and at Sunnymead and Falcon.
All right. At Sunnymead and Falcon, okay. Who designed the traffic, the, the traffic lights there?
I did.
You did. Okay, I, I would, I think we need another engineer to design that one, because it doesn't work, because yesterday...
Please keep the questions, sorry.
All right, that's fine. Yeah, I mean, that turn there on Sunnymead Road, you're going to tell me that it is safe to go around with a tractor trailer?
Wait...
On Sunnymead Road?
Where, on Sunnymead Road?
Just past where Sunnymead branches off, to go to Weston.
At the intersection of Sunnymead and Weston.
Just past, just past Falcon Road. There's a, there's a 90-degree turn there.
Yes.
And you, did you take a survey there?
Yes, we took, yeah, we did.
What did you find?
We, we found that there would be no change in level of service, that the effect of adding this site's traffic to the intersection would have no change on, on how that functions and operates.
No function at the traffic light at all. I don't get that one. I'm, I'm sorry, I just, this is...
Mr. Dean, are you a professional? Mr. Dean, are you a professional planner in the state of New Jersey as well?
I am, yes.
Hi, Elaine Welsh, Orchard Drive in Hillsborough. I'm on the whole other side of town. I have a question, sir. Weston Road, would you consider, Weston Road, would you consider that an unforgiving roadway?
I, I don't know what the definition of unforgiving is.
From my engineering studies with traffic, which was years ago, an unforgiving roadway is a roadway that is relatively narrow but has no shoulder and it has ditches on either side. So if there is a, an incident and someone has to take evasive action, if they go over to the side one way or the other, they end up in the ditch. Would that be a fair characterization of Weston Road?
I, I would characterize Weston Road in, in locations as having that characteristic, yes.
Would you characterize Sunny Mead Road in the same method?
Parts of it, yes.
How about Falcon Road?
Not exactly. Falcon Road has been substantially improved.
Oh, my goodness.
In, in many locations, Falcon Road has been improved. Does it exist in its entire length from 206 to Sunny Mead? No.
The stretch from 206 to the entrance to Coles, after the traffic light, I would agree with you, that has been widened for the increased traffic for the, you know, shopping center and whatnot. But from that point on, going eastward towards Sunny Mead is one of the most dangerous sections of roads I've ever driven on, ever. So I would venture to say that-
Can we just have questions?
Yes.
Thank you.
So what percentage of the roadway of Falcon is there? I mean, from the length of Falcon, from 206 down to Sunny Mead, what portion of it, how much percentage of it is from that back end, that entrance from Coles down to Sunny Mead? What percentage? Is it 50%?
I, I have not measured, I don't have an answer to that.
I would venture to say it's, in my opinion, it's close to 60% of the roadway. And I just find-
Please, questions, sorry.
Comments, I agree. I understand the permitted use for these roads is already there. Question, the turning radius of a tractor trailer as it turns from Weston traveling to Sunny Mead, can they navigate that turn without crossing over the lines?
I, I have not evaluated that intersection for that condition.
How about the turning radius from, let's say we're on Sunny Mead making a right turn on Falcon, can the turning radius of a tractor trailer make that turn without interfering with cars that are already stopped in ongoing traffic lanes?
As part of our design of that intersection, we met with municipal engineer, Mr. Bellinger-
My question is, can the truck make the turning radius?
And we set the traffic signal poles so that they would not be hit by a tractor trailer, and it was to accommodate tractor trailers so they can make the turn.
Okay, fair enough. But my question was, can the trucks navigate the turn without crossing over the lines and interfering with traffic that is stopped in the other direction waiting for the light to turn?
Sure. I, I don't have the answer to that.
Thank you.
See no one else from the public?
Mr. Chairman, just one question, please. Mr. Dean, are you being offered as a professional planner in this matter?
I'll defer to Mr. O'Grohanek.
No, we're not offering him as, as a planner. I just wanted, he was reciting some, some use testimony, so I wanted to put on the record that he is a professional planner in the state of New Jersey.
But he's not being law, he was not qualified as an expert planner for this particular application?
He's a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey.
That's fine, but he's not being-
I just answered the question.
I have a couple of questions, Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Bernstein.
Mr. Dean, just for the record, the previously aforementioned July 22, 2022 report from your office, is that the last report your office authored in this application?
No, that was actually the first, Mr. Bernstein. The last one was from February of this year, February 28th of this year.
Did that report on February 28, 2023, take into account testimony by Mr. Arif relative to the proposed operation of the building in question?
Yes. In fact, I appended to that correspondence, the operations overview summary that was submitted to the board.
That was an overview summary, correct?
Yes.
That was not relative to the testimony subsequently provided to the board relative to the possible hours of operation, number of trucks, use of the building, et cetera? Is that correct?
No, that's all in there, and that's page three of that February 28 report.
For purposes of the record, of course, the report is not in evidence, could you indicate for the record what that material was?
It, it is a memorandum to the Township Planning Board from Weston Road LLC dated February 16, 2023, RE Operations Overview. And I believe that was specifically requested prior to the testimony of Mr. Arif.
Can you indicate in that document what the proposed hours of operation were?
It, it's the second to the last bullet point that discusses typical hours of operation.
And that was?
Monday to Friday, 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, weekends, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
Does it indicate anywhere in there the number of trucks in and out of the potential operations during the day, not just at peak hour?
It does. Truck traffic, and I'm quoting the last bullet point, truck traffic over the course of the day will consist of four to 10 trucks inbound with deliveries and six to 10 trucks outbound with deliveries.
Relative to your testimony, is it correct that the February 28, 2023 report is the report that you're seeking the board to rely upon relative to traffic information?
No. I'm asking the board to consider the testimony that's been offered and the three reports that my office has generated for this application.
Why would the board, Mr. Dean, consider the other two reports when you've gone to great lengths today at indicating that you weren't relying on ITE information but on the testimony provided by the applicant relative to the potential operation of the site?
Sure. We didn't look at 24-hour data, which is what the objector was questioning me on, and that's where I focused on Mr. Arif's testimony and the operational memorandum. My peak hour numbers are my peak hour numbers, and they're not inconsistent with that operational testimony. If anything, they overstate the projected traffic impacts.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Coys, I see two files here dated February 28, 23. The one is titled Supplemental Traffic Report, February 28, 23. And then I have a Revised Traffic Impact Study Addendum, LRO, of February 28, 23. They're both 44 pages. So I'm trying to understand which is the most current? Or which, or did we get two files, or the same file with two different names?
Oh, I have no idea, Mr. Chairman. I, I'm looking at the documents I submitted. The first that's kicked off this whole process was July 22, 2022, Traffic Impact Analysis for Terrace Industrial Park. I believe your consultant, Panoni, generated an engineering review that resulted in my issuance of a December 30, 2022 supplemental analysis that looked at off-track impacts at Sunny Mead Road, Weston Road, and Falcon Road. And then finally, February 2023, I issued a supplemental analysis that was again responsive to the Panoni Second Traffic Engineering Review. That is the sum total of what I have produced and submitted for the application.
I feel we have two files, the same file with two different names.
Appears to be that way.
Yeah. Because I'm kind of scanning through them, looking for some differences.
Number of pages.
Okay. Okay.
All good?
Any more? All right, looks like you're done for now.
Our next witness hopefully can shed some light on, onto some of the questions that the public and the board members have.
I do. James Scott, J.A.M.E.S. Scott, S.C.O.T.T.
Mr. Scott, could you provide the board your experience in the field of warehousing?
Sure. I'm a principal at Avast and Young, we're a global provider of real estate. My focus is primarily industrial clients ranging from both development as well as owners and occupiers of commercial real estate.
And how many warehouse projects have you been a consultant with?
Projects would span several hundred, representing several million square feet of space, both locally as well as nationally and even in several international.
And what, what's the scope of your expertise related to these industrial projects?
Sure. Scope for my, my clients, which range both locally as well as large publicly traded companies. Everything from consulting, site selection, leasing, sales, portfolio management, financial analysis, et cetera.
And were you present for the prior meetings where Mr. Arif had testified about his anticipated operations?
I was.
And Mr. Arif's not a warehouse operator, is that correct?
Correct.
Could you provide some, some comment or some depth on to, to add to his testimony or to clarify any testimony or to explain operations for this particular anticipated use?
Yeah, absolutely. So that, just as a bystander, I heard a lot of different acronyms from the, the different professionals. So one I wanted to clarify was the 3PL, that is third-party warehouse. That's presently how Miracle handles their distributions. That's essentially just outsourcing of their handlings. So what that is, when they receive an order online, that's sent to the warehouse, being a third-party warehouse owned and staffed by a different company, they'll pull the, the inventory, they'll package it, put a shipping label on, and send it for pickup from the shipping carrier. So presently, of their employees, none are actually in a, in a labor or warehouse capacity. It's all administrative. And part of what we're proposing here, they would take on operations in-house, so to speak, which is more cost-effective and, and has better control of inventory.
And can you go over specifically to this site, you know, numbers of employees, remote employees? We had some questions about actual shifts, things like that?
Sure. So of the employees, I believe we had roughly 40 employees. Give me a moment, I just want to firm here.
Mr. O'Grohanek, does the witness have a report?
No. No.
Just notes from, notes from prior testimony.
Okay, thank you.
So I apologize, I missed my notes. The, the remote employees, they are all remotely based, hence the name work-from-home, et cetera. Presently, there is no central office they're reporting to. So at, at this point, we're uncertain whether at a future time those employees might ultimately report to perform their, you know, administrative, marketing, accounting type roles at this location or whether they would remain remote. As for the anticipated warehouse labor, a lot of what we're drawing upon is the existing facility. This existing facility, the third-party warehouse, it's our understanding they have approximately 55 to 60 employees, 45 of which being full-time, and that is to staff a very comparable-sized facility, about 140,000 feet, performing an identical function as would be done for Miracle.
Just to follow you, you said it's your understanding. Have you ever visited that operation?
I, I have not. I have a number of clients, both local and national, who all operate very similar facilities. And, and I would tell you that's very much in line with this type of operation.
And how do you define this type of operation?
Third, third-party distribution. So, so essentially fulfillment of online orders that are being consolidated, waiting pickup from FedEx, UPS, USPS, so forth.
They're different between products?
There, there certainly would be. I mean, I, I would imagine items like a pack of AA batteries is going to move at a much quicker rate than a antique doorknob. I mean, you, you can find literally, as you know, anything online. I'm sure they all move a little bit different. But again, the, the warehouse labor, aside from a very specialized sortation facility, is not drastically different, in my experience. The other thing I would tell you is warehouse management systems, you know, the, the software side, has come a very long way that has actually reduced labor over time. You know, so instead of fulfilling orders with, you know, clipboard and so forth, it's all digitized, the employees have a handheld scanner, it tells them exactly where the item is to pick, so it's become much more efficient.
And how, there was some question about queuing for tractor trailers and how they know when to come and pick up their trucks. Could you kind of explain, is there an app, is there, what's the process?
Correct. So, so there's a number of different ways to do it, but one is there's a dock scheduler. That's something the third-party trucking companies are provided. The last thing either the occupant of the building, Miracle, would like, or the trucking company, is to have 10 trucks arrive and only have one open door. That's, that's not good for anyone. So there are systems in place to, to regulate that traffic and ensure within the ability, within reason, they're, they're spread a little bit. The other thing worth noting are the 20 loading doors. You know, I would be surprised if any more than 10 were being actively used at a given time, meaning when I say active, being, that you would be able to observe from outside the building, you know, without a tractor attached. The remainder waiting for pickup, have been loaded, waiting to be unloaded, or somewhere in, in the process.
And there were some questions about utilization. How do you see this full utilization?
So, so, you know, it would be consistent with the testimony from Ahad. The, the truck traffic is relatively nominal for a building this size. You know, I, I understand that a lot of people envisioned warehouse to mean Amazon and the 400 vans. That, that really is an outlier, that's, that's not the case. This is a handful of trucks in in the morning, handful out in the afternoon. They're not intending to own or operate any type of their own trucking fleet. Orders are not shipped, you know, to consumers' homes, they're sent to a third-party provider.
What about staging of trailers on the property?
Sure, so the, the staging, that, that's just to ensure a safe and efficient truck flow and, and traffic on-site. We do not want congestion, we want to avoid any potential of congestion. This is just to ensure that there's no trucks waiting for space at a door. It's designed so they can very efficiently arrive, drop their trailer, you know, move on to their next delivery, or in many cases, pick up and empty. Given the different shipping providers that would be used depending on the customer location, there may be a drop trailer for FedEx, for UPS, for USPS, DHL. Each one would occupy a door, waiting an end date pickup.
And what is your experience from, let's assume an application is approved for an industrial-type building, how long would it take to actually get it operational?
From, from the point of it being delivered, certificate of occupancy, could be anywhere from 60 days to six months. You know, absent any kind of specialized equipment, though, I, I would anticipate, you know, 90 to 120 days. It does take some time for the inventory levels to build before it's kind of stabilized. But again, I would, I would say 90, 120 days.
Construction, the construction end?
I'm sorry, construction, we would like to see it be nine to 12 months. Oftentimes, there's a single item that causes delays. Recent years, it's been electric transformers. Recent years, it's been electric transformers. So you might see a fully completed building, but might just lack power for several months. So I would say 12 months on average right now, but the bulk of the work being done in probably less than nine.
Just touching on height, how does a building height impact 3PL warehouses or warehouses in general?
It's incredibly important. So in an effort to be efficient, to utilize as little footprint and square footage horizontally as possible, it's extremely critical to go vertical. So the more vertical space, you have more volume in the building, the more storage you can provide. So even in incremental several feet, does make a large difference, especially considering oftentimes you're storing pallets that, you know, are 60 inches. So sometimes the difference of a few feet change whether you have one whole pallet position in a building.
And is it your experience that in this zone, there's a 35-foot height limit, and you understand that we're seeking an extra few feet of height? What's your opinion on the necessity for that additional height?
So with that height, we would still be on the lowest end of spectrum of what is, I would consider, modern standard. Most buildings right now are being built with the interior height, meaning a usable clear height inside the building below the lowest roof truss of 36 to 40 feet. That's the industry standard. So, you know, are we're going to lose, you know, I'll defer to the architect, but I would assume roughly, you know, five to six feet from the exterior height to what is actually usable inside the building.
I have no further questions for Mr. Scott.
Who do we go to our professionals first, or objectors?
Board.
Board, okay. Board members? Do you have a report or anything, or?
Well, we, Mike. I think it's been alluded to that we have a report dated May 1st addressing traffic comments, and we had some, opened some questions still. I wanted to get some clarification. I had asked Gary Dean earlier, and I'd ask you the same question. Did you review and have an opinion on the amount of loading docks proposed?
Reviewed, yes. I think it's appropriate for the building.
And how do you come to your conclusion that 20 docks is appropriate?
So the number of loading docks does not, in my experience, translate into any number of truck trips. Again, the purpose of the docks is for staging purposes, that it allows the warehouse labor to gradually fill those trucks and containers throughout the course of the shifts, so they can be picked up and delivered efficiently. So it does not necessarily translate into there's 20 trucks arriving, 20 trucks leaving, 20 trucks arriving, 20 trucks leaving. Oftentimes, a carrier specific to a port, for instance, the drainage company pulling the container, they will drop the container and they will pick up an empty container. It's the most efficient for them. So that one trip in that instance would occupy two different loading docks. Otherwise, you're just, you're shuffling things around on the site.
Did you review and have any impending on the amount of, there's 28 trailer parking spaces proposed?
Have reviewed it, that's consistent with the industry. Odds are, they will not all be used. But again, the purpose is to alleviate any congestion and any future worries in the event, you know, more arrived than was expected.
Well, you mentioned it's consistent in the industry. In your experience, are there some metrics that people can use? So based on the square footage of the warehouse, is there an industry standard amount of loading docks, let's say, and a standard amount of trailer parking spaces?
So the standards are continually changing. As far as the loading docks, you know, it's going to be specific on the type of building. There's cross-dock buildings with loading doors on each side. A lot just depends on the geometry of the building. You know, this building's about 275 feet deep. So generally speaking, you're going to fill that whole elevation with loading docks as it permits. There's really no other positions you could put a loading dock if you were to look at the site plan. So typically, these buildings are designed to maximize that one elevation of the building. A deeper building that was more square would have less proportionately, if that makes sense. So if I were to answer in square footage terms, you will see on average, one loading dock anywhere between 5,000 feet and 10,000 square feet of building area.
And is there, in your experience, is there some sort of metric to help a person plan on how many trailer parking spaces they would use in the similar type of analysis where how many per 5,000 or 10,000 square feet of warehouse?
It's going to be specific every user. Right now, we're seeing often one-to-one, meaning one tailgate door to parking space. I think we're slightly over that. But that's a relatively common metric.
And in your experience, does, is there industry indicators as to the turnover rate of a loading dock?
That's very much user-specific. I know Miracle, their imports are floor-stacked in those inbound containers, meaning that they're not on palletized, you can't just simply scoop and pull one off their hand unpacked, I should say. So there is a physical limitation in how quickly a trailer can be loaded or unloaded.
Well, I guess my question would be, has anybody asked you, or were you involved in helping to decide how many loading docks were necessary for this operation?
Again, the 20 loading docks, that's consistent with modern standards when you look at a ratio in terms of square footage. Again, if the question, if I'm understanding it right, alludes to truck traffic, this alleviates the need to pull out a trailer to put the next one in. It allows you just to do things more efficiently. So again, I would caution against trying to correlate it with truck traffic, if I understand the concern right.
At the risk of asking the same question, but would you have an opinion on how long a truck would be in a dock typically?
Typically, the trucking company, for their own interest, is going to avoid live-loading, meaning idling there. I think even by law, New Jersey, I think it's 15 minutes, there's a limit. But typically, any time period over a certain number of minutes or hours, the trucking company will charge the customer extra because they do not want their trucker or their truck idle, not generating revenue. So the users are incentivized to load and unload quickly, and that's why I'm saying it's more efficient to drop the trailer, as opposed to the truck driver to wait there for, you know, two hours to be loaded.
Do you have an opinion, or from your experience, do you have an estimate of how long a trailer would be sitting at a dock?
I would, I'd imagine 24, 48 hours at most. I mean, I'm sure there's an exception to that, but again, these would be the trailers parked at the doors, no activity outside the building. And it's simply when they back up the trailer, the inside door goes up. Should also note, any containers, there is a time period, I believe it's four days, sometimes three, in which you must return the container back to the port, or you begin facing daily penalties, which add up quick. So generally speaking, those do turn fairly quickly.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, and so I have at this time.
Thank you. Next voice.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You had alluded before, related to the height. Do you happen to know, actually, let me back up a second. You had alluded that, based on the height, that if you, if this approval wasn't granted, for the height variance, basically, the building could potentially be larger. And so you were talking about it's essential, according to you, in terms of it, you know, vertically being a height that makes sense for this user.
Correct.
Do you know approximately how much larger the building would have to be if the building was, you know, built to the?
I understand the question. I would have to do the math, but I would imagine it would be in the range of 20%.
Okay.
I mean, it's essentially, and I understand, prior to getting into the business, I'd never set foot in a warehouse. It is a little bit mysterious for those who haven't been in a building. If you were to think of your Home Depot, you have the product you can reach on the ground, you have different levels of storage above. So in a Home Depot, you might have three levels high. In a building like this, you may have four. So my point is, when you lose one level out of four, it's very impactful. Or you lose one out of five, very impactful. How many levels also is dependent on the height of the pallet, which is going to vary by product.
Okay. You made a reference to modern standards, and our zoning allows warehousing, shipping, and receiving, but in your field, you know, you're the expert that would know the different types of warehousing. Can you further clarify for the board in terms of how would you classify this type of warehousing? With all the terms that get thrown out there, you know, the word warehousing keeps getting used, but can you further classify, based on the testimony that's been provided by the prospective tenant, what type of warehousing this is?
This would be very generic warehouse fulfillment. I don't believe there's a standard set of industry terms. There's a lot of, there's a lot of marketing buzz. You know, on the marketing side, everyone likes to talk about last-mile logistics. You know, when people hear that, they think of the 400 Amazon vans, you know, racing out of the parking lot all at the same time. This is nowhere remotely on that spectrum. This is just a very traditional warehouse and distribution.
Okay. And then, are you familiar with the report that I issued on March 21st, 2023, related to some of the prohibited uses of, that the town currently has? And I'll read specifically. "The applicant shall provide specific testimony related to the use that the proposal does not include a truck terminal as defined by Section 183 and the associated prohibited use listed, so on and so forth," without, you know, reading the entire definition. But I did want to mention, it does go over the different prohibited uses, such as motor freight terminals, motor and truck transfer stations, motor and truck depots, motor and truck storage sites, truck stops, and truck repair facilities. Just in case you were the expert that was going to be talking on this, I wanted to give you an opportunity.
I do not believe it would fall under any of those categories.
And based on your testimony that the trucks at the bays would potentially be there for 24 to 48 hours, could you just clarify that you were talking about the bays? Because obviously, there's a large number of tractor-trailer parking that's also proposed for the site. So could you give more insight to how that essentially makes sense in terms of, okay, if the trailer is going to be potentially there, loading 24 to 48, what is the reason? Or can you explain to the board, what is the reason? Or how would those parking spaces for the trailers, how would they function?
Sure. So in a perfect world, they would not use that trailer parking. Again, with the 20 loading doors, it's a luxury of being able to load and unload every vehicle without doing extra switches to free up a space. So in a perfect world, no, we wouldn't use any. What could hypothetically happen is a, you know, inbound, you know, freight ship, if we have 10 containers that arrive in two days, you know, we have four days to return those containers to the port. But might we have 10 loading doors available at one given time? The answer is no. In which case, we would accommodate whatever we could at the loading doors, with any access being parked right there in the truck court, which is, that's on the north side, facing the industrial neighbor, not the Hearthstone.
Okay. The, so do you find it necessary that the tractor-trailer parking is necessary? Especially if you've provided testimony earlier that out of the 20 loading bays, that only 10 are most likely to be used? I would, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but if you could further clarify, are you suggesting that those additional 10 that wouldn't be used right now, are those intended for potential future growth?
My understanding is it's something that the site plan afforded, and just the ability to have it just addresses any potential concerns. I recall a previous hearing, somebody had asked, what if a truck arrives early or late? Having that parking helps address those concerns, that a truck is not going to arrive and have nowhere to park.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Board members? No, we'll go board members first.
Mr. Scott, in your experience with general warehousing and so, the demand for warehousing, is it increasing, decreasing? Is there a particular size of warehouse that has become more applicable or desirable?
So it's certainly increasing. I'd say demand is slowing somewhat, that's cyclical. You know, keeping in mind that the ports of New York and New Jersey collectively, they would rank about third nationally in the volume of activity there. So we're also in the most densely populated corridor in the country, you know, depending on, you know, which statistics you read, anywhere from 30% to 45% of the US population is in a one-day truck drive. So from a distribution standpoint, to hit X number of customers in Y hours or so many days from the point of order, this is a logical logistics destination.
This site?
This site, meaning regionally.
So are the type of warehouses that you see are becoming, are they last-mile warehouses? Are they the larger regional ones? Which ones do you feel, or is it a mixture of all, that becoming in this particular region, as you say, so densely populated? What is the, and why?
It's going to be mixed. So you have, you have large retailers, you know, the, I don't want to use Amazon's name because they get thrown around a little bit too much, but Target, Kohl's, and any name brand you can think of, they may have a warehouse for a billion square feet. But for every one of those, there may be 10 others who do third-party. So if you were to go on Amazon and go to order anything, you can probably find 100 of the same item from 100 different sellers, and those 100 sellers don't have their own warehouse. So they oftentimes will go to a 3PL, such as where Miracle is now. Pros and cons there, it's very flexible, you can start with a small amount of product and grow, but it's just very expensive. You're paying every service à la carte. So trying to answer your question, it really is a range. We are seeing a little bit less of the true last mile. Amazon has actually subleased many of their facilities where they were doing, trying to fulfill that next-day delivery. You know, COVID hit, they thought they were going to pull forward the next 10 years of growth, and it kind of snapped back the other way. So I can tell you, in Philadelphia, client of mine just leased 100,000 feet with seven acres of parking that Amazon built, this new tenant isn't using any of it. You know, they don't have a fleet of delivery vans. You know, Amazon found those just too expensive, in many cases, to do that next-day delivery.
So that brings me to my next question. So how, do you find people relocating from existing warehouses to others, or building new ones? I mean, obviously, this tenant was asked, he testified he's in Florida, he wants to come up here. There are other places that may be available, yet he wants to build his own. Is there a inventory of open space around in this region?
Very little. So despite the volume of new construction that we've seen... Very little. So despite the volume of new construction that we've seen, overall, available inventory is very low. You know, depending on what size range you're looking for, it could be anywhere from 3% to 5%. So we're still near historic lows in what's actually available. And that's not uniform across all sizes as well. Some of the very large buildings of half a billion square feet, statistically, they skew the numbers to show more vacancy than there really is. But again, relative to Florida, when you look at, you know, if you're trying to sell online and offer your customers a two-day delivery, you can only hit a very small portion of the country from that location. You're also restricted by importing what comes into that port. So I'd say, you know, Florida as a whole is very much subpar from that distribution standpoint.
All right, just a couple more. So in your opinion, when people are in a warehouse, is it beneficial to stay, or is it, or is it too costly prohibitive to move a location? And then, if they decide, A, it's not big enough, or et cetera, what is your?
It's, so it's very costly. So commercial leases, one, they range five to 10 years, on average, is a typical commercial lease term. Just the cost of racking for a building like this, to store the product, that could be $700,000, $800,000. Just the Wi-Fi for IT and software infrastructure, that could be $100,000. You have staffing, you have forklifts. It's very cost prohibitive to pick up and move. So to address growth, more often, we would see a second location.
Okay. And I can think of last minute. So with this applicant, obviously, stuff's coming in floor-loaded, that I would imagine put on pallets. And then, I guess, you have a racking system built in there to?
Correct.
Hold all the material?
Correct.
And then they would then break it down?
Correct. And a portion of the floor space would be dedicated to breaking the pallets apart into smaller sections, doing some repack, some return, some smaller services as well. But the bulk would be palletized and vertical storage.
Okay. That's all I got for you, Chair. Any other board members?
Yeah. Mr. Scott, thanks. Can you provide us, well, can you provide us with your CV? I know you gave, went over your background a little bit, but I think just having a full CV in the record. I'm sorry, CV?
Curriculum, vintages, your resume.
Sure. Sure. So 15-plus years, got in wonderful time to the business right at the end of '07, just some time to, you know, kind of see it fall off the cliff there. But I've worked with, like I mentioned earlier, anything from a local mom and pop up to publicly traded company. The real estate is one of the biggest decisions the company will make, and they don't do it often, hence the need to pull an outside consultant. So what it's caused us to do to accommodate those clients is to try to learn a little bit about everything, but also know when to pull in, you know, further expertise. So I can speak a little bit to racking systems, sprinkler systems, loading doors, the levelers, so forth. But as far as range of services, financial analysis, investment sales, site design, you know, developers will often ask many of the same questions you have, which is, I have 30 acres. Is it better to build this shape building or that shape building? Really covers a very broad spectrum.
So do you have any licenses or certifications?
Sure. I am licensed in Pennsylvania, New Jersey, and Delaware.
As a?
As a Realtor. Correct.
All right. How, so we, when you, how is a, can you explain how a container will be unloaded? Is it all at once? Is it, and this gets a little bit to what Mayor was asking, is the trailer comes in, is it partially unloaded, or is it as far as operations?
Typically, when a container comes in, it's pretty much jam-packed. So every inch from the floor to the ceiling is packed. So the warehouse labor would unpack it, palletize it, send it to a designated spot in the racking system where it's stored. So you can imagine, it's very labor-intensive coming off those containers. So if you have three arrive at once, you can see that same labor, it may take them a day to unload three trailers. In the meantime, there's also staff that are pulling orders, that are going to a designated loading position for FedEx or UPS or so forth.
So if one trailer, one container's dropped off, it'll be unloaded by the end of the day, the end of the shift, eight hours, six hours?
Within a day is typical. And again, it's, it's just going to be based on the volume of what's coming in. It's going to be seasonal. You know, I'm sure you saw in the news the last few years, that the pictures of the ships, you know, off the shore that were delayed coming in. I mean, there's been a number of hiccups. But on average, in normal times, it would be 24, 48 hours, and that container's going back to the port.
Okay. And do you have any opinion on the hours of operation that were testified to? I think, I don't remember the exact hours, but it was like seven to?
Yeah.
And then on Fridays and Saturdays? Any comments on that?
Regular business hours, you know, warehouse and logistics tends to be slightly earlier than, you know, white-collar office professional, meaning, you know, shifts may start at six, with the expectation of, you know, loading at seven. So again, regular business hours, to the extent a second shift is required. To be honest, it's best to avoid it. Just nighttime labor and off, outside business hours tends to be more expensive and very difficult to staff. So just from a business standpoint, it's not something I think Miracle wants to pursue if they don't have to.
So the hours of operation are not really limiting them in any capacity?
It would, they would expand the hours only in response to demand, to seasonal fluctuations, you know. You get into holiday season, Black Friday, you know, I'm sure they're going to have to bring in some part-time labor to meet those orders and make sure the packages get out on time.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Any others? Okay. Well, I have a couple. Because I guess what I'm very troubled with right now is, you know, and I think you even kicked it off and started, it really isn't an expert in operations. But I haven't really heard from you that you really were involved in designing their operations. You've been kind of giving general consulting ideas. So I don't feel I've heard anyone that is familiar with this operations to establish the hours, what activities going, the expansion plan. Because I know, Mr. Reeve, I felt like half of his questions was, go ask my operations consultant. But I haven't heard anything from your testimony that you've really been involved with this business plan, other than, you know, perhaps giving some general guidelines. So I want to know, are we going to hear anyone that really knows this operations, this business? Because I don't feel I've heard it yet.
So I would tell you, his operations are really not unique to any other warehouse distribution.
Right, but it's unique to this application. We want it, and we expect it, someone that's very intimate knowledge of this operations. I haven't heard it. So, and I understand, if you don't know, you don't know, and that's fine. But I'm kind of looking at Mr. O'Grady because he was presenting.
What questions you have? We'll answer them. I mean, we have the hours of operations, number of employees, the logistics for the shipping.
No, no. Why those operational hours, Mr. Reeve? I don't think really knew.
That, those are regular industry hours.
I want to know this business's hours. I don't want generalities. I understand, you know, warehouse operations can run, you know, more than one shift, you know, into the evenings. You know, I've been part of that type of, in some of my past lives. So I'm trying to understand this business right now, understanding the needs of this business. He, you know, he cited, you know, number of trucks, well, it's four to 10, but he didn't really know. He's got an expansion plan, but I don't really know my expansion plan. Because there is some, you know, I'm not going to say, I'm going to say there's questions as to, you know, he's taken a small part of that building, don't know what's going on in the other building, kind of alluded to, there may be an expansion, eventually take it all over. Is there a business plan out here? I've heard a lot of general, again, generalities. Maybe in a few years, three to four years maybe, or something.
We're dealing with an uncertain timeline on the building. His growth so far has been, you know, almost exponential. Like I mentioned, the 3PL services, you're paying services à la carte. So every time that provider touches the product, they charge you when they unload a truck, they charge you a monthly storage fee, they charge you to take it back off the racking system, put a label on it. If it has to be a pallet where you want to break it down into separate sections, they charge you for that. Every time they touch it, you're being charged. So from a cost efficiency, it's probably double the cost of having your own direct space, one. Two, the growth trajectory is there. Knowing that this is a 10-year commitment, on average, for a lease term, it would be very short-sighted to try to size your building to next year's growth. So yes, there is some growth built in there. You know, what makes textile distribution different than a pair of sneakers, or a piece of, you know, loose leaf or whatnot? Really, it's nothing. It's the product goes in, it's inventoried, it's put in a storage system, and on demand, it's returned. So I'm trying to answer the question, if the equivalent in offices, you know, what makes an office building so certain their employees are going to be nine to five? I would submit that's generally expected. Warehouse distribution is really no different.
Right. But we don't even know how many employees. Because I mean, I think that was one of the biggest questions. He didn't know how many employees were even, out of that 55 were touching his product. You just said, you testified you weren't down there.
Which is, which is not a building we manage.
Right.
And that's, that's a comparable facility. But those employees you're covering, it could be 30 different customers. I have a client recently, Philadelphia, they were serving about 4,000 orders per day out of 100,000 square feet. They were only getting 10 trucks in, because these were small, hand-picked items. Two years ago, they had 70 employees. They're doing the same work now with about 35. And that's purely a result of changing their software systems from paper to digital. So there's a lot of moving targets, we're projecting a few years out.
But for typical hours of operation, the testimony was Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, weekends, nine to five, with additional expanded hours during seasonal business demand requirements. So if you're looking for?
No, I was looking for a why, you know. Because it gets down to, I think, the basic question. How many employees? Because we, I know we didn't, we could not nail that question down, or nail that answer.
I mean, in fairness, we're?
Business plan, because, boy, when I was in business school, if I just threw that out there, I would have been a short-term student.
That is what is being forecasted.
Okay. Okay. So I'm going to just ask Mike, how you doing? You need a break? Break time? Okay.
I have one more question before we break. Do you know if they plan to put any sort of robotics in there for picking or anything like that, or is it all going to be manual?
I understand it's all manual.
Okay. All right. We're going to take a break. It's a little bit, we will come back at 5:00 after. Okay, we're back in session. Mr. Bernstein, I think you were going to be up next.
Thank you. Mr. Scott, at what point did you become involved in this application?
I would say six to nine months ago.
Were you brought in prior to the determination as to the supposed size of the building?
I was still involved at that stage. I think at that point, we were roughly 150,000, but had been involved in behind-the-scenes as that's been reduced.
Were you aware of what the determination was as to why 150, or 130, or 120,000 square feet? Without Mr. O'Grady nodding up and down?
That's what the site afforded, so naturally?
So the answer is, the square footage of the site was based on the size of the property?
Of course. Correct.
So the objective here was to maximize the size of the building irrespective of the use of the building?
I object to that question.
You can object all you want. I'm asking the question, was that a determining factor? He can answer it or not?
That was absolutely a consideration. I mean, that's good business sense. The prospective tenant has an interest in the building, as you've established.
The prospective tenant have an interest in the entire building?
No.
At what point along the way was there a discussion, let me rephrase that, you were here when the prospective tenant, who's also the prospective owner, testified? Is that correct?
Correct.
At what point, either during that testimony or prior to it, in your discussions, were there discussions that this was going to be a multi-use facility?
I'm not sure I understand the question. Multi-use.
You just indicated that the building was larger than he needed.
That is not what I said.
What did you say?
I responded to your question of what was considered in determining the building size.
And it was determined that it was the size of the property and to maximize it. And I believe I then asked you the question, was it the tenant slash owner's desire to use the entire building? And your response, I believe, was no.
No, that's incorrect.
He can answer the question.
Okay, I'm not going to object because you're mischaracterizing his testimony. You asked him.
So have him characterize the testimony in what he believes, not what you believe, what he believes the testimony is.
Is this intended to be a multi-tenant building?
No.
Is this an owner-occupied building?
Yes.
Okay.
Does the owner intend to use the entire facility at the time of startup?
Yes.
All 120,000 square feet?
Yes.
For a business that is currently using how many square feet in Florida?
Approximately 25,000.
Are you aware, was there any discussion about the operations of the facility in Florida in terms of hours of operation, number of employees, et cetera?
Yes, I believe I addressed that.
Okay. And were there, let's write that. You indicated it was harder to get night workers. Is that correct? Then you?
Yes.
You wanted to find night workers in terms of timeframe?
Generally speaking, if we consider business hours, seven to five, outside those hours. Typically, employees want to be home for dinner, they have obligations in the morning with children. It's more difficult to find employees who want to work those overnight hours.
How about weekend hours?
To some degree, the same. Some operations are six days a week, there's varying schedules.
Were there discussions of varying schedules of the proposed employees for this facility?
If you're asking the question, have we scheduled our employees for the three-year or four-year looking statement? The answer is no.
I'm asking you, okay, I'm asking, was there any discussion, not to say you had scheduled them, was there any discussion in your consultation as to the type of employees and hours of work?
We anticipated it would be typical of the industry, which I've specified with the, you know, traditional warehouse and logistics labor, meaning forklift drivers, meaning other labor to sort, pick, pack, very consistent with what you'd find in any other distribution center.
Are distribution centers going toward the use of non-human labor?
We could talk for an hour about that. I'd say some buildings, yes, some buildings, no.
I'd say some buildings, yes, some buildings, no. For this scale operation, this is not Amazon. I, I don't envision them investing $30 million in automation. So I'm, I'm not sure how to answer that.
The answer, I didn't try to ascertain whether there was a discussion or whether there was any understanding of it. You gave a significant amount of testimony related to the loading and unloading of vehicles at the facility. Typically, if I am bringing four to 10 trucks onto the site in a given day, how many trucks are leaving the site loaded or unloaded?
I, I would differentiate one between the containers related to the port and other tractor trailers. So it's typically the, the drage companies, trucking companies that serve the ports, they're generally exchanging the one truck in, one truck out, meaning, or should say trailer. So they're picking up and empty because they're going to the exact same location back and forth. So typically, they would do that. You may have a FedEx, if they had enough volume for Miracle, they may drop a trailer so that when they pick up a trailer on Tuesday, they're, they're leaving the trailer for Wednesday pickup, if, if that makes sense. That's not going to be uniform, you know, there, there are going to be shipments going to other locations. So it's really dependent on what the trucking carrier is. And of course, we, we can't establish the particular trucking carrier or their schedule this far in advance, but conceptually, that's how it would work.
Was there a discussion of a distinction as to what these four to 10 trucks out in and six to 10 trucks out a day would consume? Would they be container trucks, FedEx-type vehicles, standard carrier?
So, so this, this was, you know, based on the, the current inventory being, being moved, developed some estimates on, on what that would translate to. You know, there's going to be some variation whether is every trailer 100% filled when it departs? Is it 80% filled? I mean, there, there's some, some variables in there. But we were also drawing upon what facilities such as this would typically get, as well as the, the current provider.
And based on that, how many loading docks would be needed on an ongoing basis?
Again, the 20 was, was sufficient and optimal for this size building?
Well.
Could, if, if you're asking, could they exist with fewer docks? I would say yes, but it would be contingent upon them simply moving trailers around in the yard.
I believe, correct me, I'm sure you will, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe your testimony that the number of loading docks was tied to the square footage of the building. Is that correct?
I would tell you in development, generally, they fall in a range, yes. There, there's not a, a scientific formula that dictates that Miracle needs 18 doors versus 20 or 22.
So the issue of the number of loading docks is really not dependent upon, in your testimony, the facility or the use of the facility, it's tied to the, the square footage of the building?
There, there's a correlation, yes, but if I could just, just ask, what, what is the concern?
I'm asking the question, sir, you, you, you've been left to the board's belief by your client that you are the logistics expert for this facility. So I'm trying to ascertain, the request is for a 20-loading dock, 130-plus-or-minus-thousand square foot facility. And I believe it's your testimony that that number is correlated based on the number of docks is correlated to the number of square feet of the building.
That is, that is, that is correct. The, the ratio is what you would expect in a modern warehouse. Additionally, I noted that just the geometry and the way the site lays out will play a role in, in what's actually built versus what is not.
And what is that geometry?
Typically, maximum distance, you'd go from a, a loading door to rear building would be 360 feet. Typically, the first 60 feet of the, the bay is called a speed bay, meaning the first section, think of that as the, kind of the throughway where all the forklift traffic's going back and forth before it goes down the aisles. So that, that's just a very efficient layout. You know, I, you would, you would not design a building that was 600 feet deep with only six loading doors. It would be inefficient. It would, it would take forever to drive a forklift to the rear of the building back. So again, this just, this falls within what I would consider just be a functional and efficient design.
Did you review as part of your consulting work for this applicant, the township's various code provisions in relation to these types of facilities?
I, I did not review code compliance. Can you be more specific?
Your testimony is ostensibly based upon your previous experience in consulting in this field. Is that correct?
Correct. I'm, I'm, I'm here in capacity of what's, what's operating onsite. I, I can't speak to the nuances of the code.
You're talking about what could operate onsite if the application was approved, correct?
Correct.
It is not currently operating in this manner?
No, I, I would, I would say it is operating this manner, just albeit at a smaller scale in, under a third-party provider.
I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, your testimony is you have not been to the facility in Florida?
I've not been to that specific facility. I do not believe there's anything unique I would see at that facility that would be unlike any other comparable third-party facility that was local.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I think your testimony was that this type of business is operated differently than other types of business in the fact that it is predominantly manual labor unloading and loading the, the.
I, I expressed that there was not any plan for any advanced automation.
I'm not even, I'm not even talking automation. I'm talking about loading and unloading the vehicles, the trucks as they come to the facility now is almost all manual, is it not?
Manual meaning, yes, it needs to be physically removed from the truck, put on a pallet. I think what I was trying to express is there, there's a limit physically to how quickly those trucks can be loaded or unloaded. I, I know there's a, a lot of questions on activity. I was trying to address that. Absent loading off the trailer, you know, everything is going to be handled by, by forklifts and so forth.
Is, is the material on the, coming off the trailer on pallets?
Typically, no.
In the industry, is it not desirable to be as close to a large thoroughfare, either a multi-lane highway, throughway, et cetera, for loading, for bringing transportation on and off than it is to come further and further away from the, the roadways you're going to use to get in and out?
I think in, in relative terms, I, I would not consider this to be a rural or tertiary location.
And why is that?
Meaning, within an hour, you're, you're at the ports, meaning a, a drage company can do multiple turns delivering product, it's not going to have any adverse impact on the shipping rates.
Have you driven during rush hour periods between the proposed site and Port Newark?
I, I cannot attest, I've, I've test-driven. What, what I'm telling you is it's not going to have any discernible impact on the cost to Miracle.
The cost, I'm talking about the time to move things on and off. I'm talking about in terms of whether or not it makes sense from an overall point of view to put a warehouse, whether it's Miracle or anyone else's, on a tertiary road such as the one that's being proposed here.
I, I can't speak to your definite tertiary. What I would tell you is the cost of real estate becomes exponentially more expensive as you move towards the port. And it would be economically not viable to have this location in immediate proximity to the port.
How about along a state highway?
I, I'm telling you, I don't believe there would be, I, I'm not sure what the question is.
No further questions. Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, may I go back and ask a couple of quick questions?
Sure.
Mr. Scott, you were asked before about your resume.
Yes.
And at the very end of your dissertation about your experience and your credentials, you mentioned you are a licensed Realtor in Pennsylvania, New Jersey, and Delaware.
Correct.
Do you have any educational training or background in logistics? And if so, can you please provide that to us?
Specific logistics designations, I, I do not. As, as far as in the industry specific, I do not, no.
So the wealth of opinions that you've provided today are based on what?
My, my opinions are from 15 years of working with corporations of all shapes and sizes as I sit with their teams, both ranging from warehouse managers to the CFO, CEO, understanding their needs, working with their consultants, I'm part of a larger project team in many ways. I may be the quarterback working with that group.
And what company do you actually work for?
I'm with Avast Young.
And where are they located?
We're a, a global company. We're, we're about $1 billion in revenue. I think we're on five continents, about 5,000 professionals globally.
Where's your office located?
I office in Conshohocken, although predominantly, I am working from home, just give my schedule of, of being on the road.
Where'd you say the office was?
Conshohocken, Pennsylvania.
Pennsylvania?
Correct.
And where do you live?
I'm in Bucks County, Pennsylvania.
And since you've been involved in this project, how many times have you visited the site?
Number, dozen. As it stands, it's, it's vacant land.
Well, I understand that, but you've rendered a number of opinions based upon the logistics of trucks coming and going and locations to ports and means of transportation. And my question is, and I think Mr. Bernstein asked the same question, have you taken the time to drive from the location to the ports in the time that you've been associated with this project?
I, I'll defer to traffic on that. I, I have, I have looked at it. I, I have looked at it online. I know, again, you know, I, I couldn't tell you what, what it is down to a minute at different times of day. What I'm telling, what I'm telling you is relative to other locations, if I were to tell you in, in southern New Jersey, this is a superior location. That would materially impact cost.
Sir, I'm not asking you that. And I appreciate what your personal opinion is in terms of the location. But you're proffered as an expert in the logistics and the operation of the facility. And it doesn't sound like you have any credentials to do that other than work experience over the last 15 years. You have no, no educational training, no certificates, no licenses. You have a Realtor's license, and my understanding of Realtor's license is you have a license to sell or represent property owners to sell the property and/or lease it. So my question is, again, have you taken the time to travel yourself, the area and location of this facility, proposed facility, going to the ports where the materials will be coming from?
No, I, I've not done that. I've done it to the, the major highways.
You've done it to which major highways?
I, I've come out several different ways. Again, what I'm, what I'm submitting is within the drive time, it is a reasonable drive time from a trucking and logistics standpoint.
Okay. I have no further questions.
Any additional? All right.
Actually, excuse me. Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I do have a follow-up. It's related to the, to the height variance. In your opinion, if this building was not to be granted the additional height variance, can this business operate under the 35 feet maximum?
From a physical, there, there's nothing that would prevent the building from operating. What it would do is limit the storage volume, which, which would be, you know, obviously negative impact and, and it would make us less competitive versus other real estate alternatives. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Scott, thank you for your time. You'll be happy to know, many of my questions have already been asked. So I did want to start by this. On a typical workday, what do you do? Like, not just for this project, but I mean, you know, in general, what is your, what do you do?
But my, my role is to provide my clients with the information they need to make a business decision. So, so basically, I'm, I'm trying to match a real estate solution to a operational need. So depending on whether the client was a tenant, a landlord, they may be looking at expanding operations. It could be a multitude of things.
And in those multitude of things, are you generally bringing somebody who either wants to purchase or lease a piece of property, together with somebody who has the ability to sell or lease that property? Is that generally what you're doing?
That's a portion of it.
How big a portion, just out of curiosity? Approximately, I don't expect exact.
Maybe half. What I would tell you is in, in these transactions that are 10, 20, 30 million dollar transactions, there's very, very little salesmanship. It's consulting to ensure that whoever's making the site selection for a property, they want to know that they're, they're going to be able to be successful in that location. So it's, it's, I, I, I know you'd mentioned sales, it's, it's very small amount of true sales. It's, it's more so providing data.
So it's matching, correct me if I'm wrong, it's matching the business with a location?
Correct. It's, it's providing all the data points so they can make an educated decision. Correct.
Okay. With regard specifically to this project, I believe you said you were retained six to nine months ago?
Correct.
Did you, did you help the applicant locate this piece of property or had they already located it when you were involved?
My understanding is they, they had located the property. Correct.
And for the applicant or Miracle Brands, who I believe are somewhat one and the same, what capacity are you working with them now? Like, what exactly are you doing?
My, my engagement letter is, is encompasses a lot of different things. So it's, it's, it's site design, it's evaluation, it, there's, I, I wouldn't be able to tell you where it starts and where it stops.
I understand. Um, let's go to site design. Were you involved when, were you involved prior to the initial 150,000 square foot warehouse was designed?
I, I couldn't tell you exactly where they were in the process. I, I'm sure I could go backwards and find a date, but I, you know, I'm not sure if they had formally submitted that point or not.
Did you provide input into that design?
I had provided guidance as far as, you know, is, is this fitting the metrics of, of a, a functional building? In, in that capacity, yes.
In providing that guidance, did you look at Miracle Brands' current operation at the time in Florida?
No, it's, we were working on a growth projection. So we're looking at this size range. You know, rarely in our business does a tenant have the luxury of saying, I want to find a 135,000 square foot building or 140. Generally, tenants are forced to look in increments of 10, 20,000 feet, if not larger. So it's typical, a tenant may look for 200 to 300,000 feet. So it's typical, a tenant may look for 200 to 300,000 feet. That's a broad range. So this was a size that fit those growth projections, despite not knowing the exact square footage.
And that's exactly where I was going to go next. So in looking at that growth projection, what was used in that analysis? What data, you know, what was used and what was generated?
Those just based on where they've been. I mean, as Miracle testified, their growth has been near exponential. They're just beginning to hit economies of scale that will allow them to import in greater quantity, get better cost savings. As their brand grows, the brand awareness grows, it's, they're going through a period of very explosive growth.
But what specifically, I understand the generalities that you're explaining, but what specifically, like what data were you looking at to determine this growth analysis?
I would object to that question. It's confidential. We're not going to talk about numbers of growth on Miracle Brand.
And that's fine. That's not what I'm asking. I'm not asking for the amount of money they're making. I'm not asking for exactly where they see themselves in the market of bed sheets and linens and things of that nature. But what I do think is important is, well, maybe I can ask it a different way. If this project's approved, and I believe you said six months, nine months would be the hope that it would get built, maybe longer than that. Let's say a year, whatever we want to say. Let's say-
Three years, two years, four years, realistically.
In two years, how many employees does Miracle Brand think they're going to have?
Prior to this building delivery?
Once this building is ready to go. If this is approved, if we have 130,000 square foot warehouse with 20 truck bays and 28 truck spots and 99 car spots.
So the numbers we had provided assumed it would be fully utilized, meaning wherever they are in that growth cycle, if they were only utilizing 60%, I imagine it would be lower.
Okay, so you'd be, so the numbers you provided would be, correct me if I'm wrong, somewhat the max growth, the max capacity?
Correct.
So you don't know, correct me if I'm wrong, exactly how many employees, for example, what the projection of that would be, or what the percentage of the building that would be used would be once it's built, if it's built in a year, or if it's built in two years?
No, I could tell you that, but again, this is based on the full utilization.
And I was going to ask the same question, not about employees, but about truck bays, for example. If we were built in a year, how many of those truck bays are going to be used at that time? Approximately, I know you can't give me exacts, but-
I couldn't, I would imagine not all of them. Yeah, but I couldn't tell you.
And do you know right now how much space Miracle Brand needs to do their operations?
Sure. So like I said, our understanding, you know, based on what Miracle's obtained from their, knowing the number of pallets and so forth they have, they're occupying approximately 25,000 feet of that existing 3PL. Keep in mind of that, in additional to what they're physically occupying, you're going to have areas of the building that are generic, you know, you're going to have small administrative area, you're going to have restrooms, you're going to have other areas of the building. Our understanding is what they're using with their own product-
Right.
Is approximately 25,000.
Okay. And have they outgrown that as of today, or are they approaching outgrowing that space?
I know, so the way it works, that's a good question. The way it works is they do not lease a dedicated square footage. So the challenges of existing in a 3PL environment are if Miracle experienced a rapid growth, and let's say they needed 10,000 square feet of additional space, that may not exist in that building. And they have a problem. It could be another customer is growing at the same time, and they're more or less squeezed out. At that point, they have to grow into a second facility somewhere. It becomes problematic. So that is a challenge of being in a third-party environment. When you're a small, young company, it's very flexible. But as you begin to stabilize and reach certain economy of scale, it has its downsides.
So right now, they're operating okay, but we just don't know when it's going to be a problem and they need a bigger space.
Believe so, correct. We cannot say that if they needed to double the space tomorrow, their third-party provider could not guarantee them that space.
I wanted to briefly touch on, I know there's been a lot of questions on this already, but on the use of the bays and the truck spots. My understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, is that, you know, the thought would be that you'd be using, that Miracle Brand would be using 10 truck bays at once actively, and then you sort of had the extra 10 available if needed?
Not exactly. What I was trying to convey was, it would surprise me if you were to be outside the property and see 10 tractors at any given point, meaning the other 10 doors may have a trailer parked at them. Of those 10, five could be empty, waiting to be loaded from the interior. You could have five that are full and waiting to be picked up. So there's always some movement. Part of the inefficiency of older buildings is they had fewer doors. So the result was you'd have the tractor-trailer sit there and idle and wait for it to be loaded, while the next one was trying to find a place to park in the parking lot. That's non-existent. I don't want to say non-existent, but the industry's moved away from that, just for efficiency reasons. It's not, it's not helpful for the trucking companies, it's not helpful for the warehouse operators.
And with this amount of space, you'd have the ability to leave, I believe, containers, whether they be full or empty, depending upon where you are, without the truck idling, like you said?
Exactly.
And then how does the truck spots work, the 28 spots? Is that just excess capacity in case you need it?
Correct.
So in a situation where, you know, it may happen, it may not, I think you said in a perfect world, it would never happen, but you have all 20 bays full. Then-
Two more trucks show up, they could park in those empty spaces until new space became available. Correct.
And then, so would there be scenarios ever where maybe the trucks would drop off the container in the spots?
Conceivably. I mean, it could work both ways.
And I think you said, and I believe Mr. Reeve said this as well, that you would never want those containers there for more than like three or four days, because-
You're paying a very stiff payment to those container, the drainage companies. You're, I believe it's in the range of several hundred dollars per day, per container, when it's not returned promptly.
And when we're talking about those, the ones from the port, are those the containers that are full of goods, or the containers that are empty? Or I guess could it be both?
So you'd have the full coming from the port and empties being returned?
Okay.
Yeah.
99 car spots, how has that arrived at?
So we looked at the estimated employee count, anticipating that should there be multiple shifts, whether it was two or three, there's going to be some overlap of those two shifts. Meaning, you don't want exactly 30 spaces and 30 employees, because when the next 30 come in, you know, you have that logjam. So that accommodates the shift change.
And that's based basically off of full build-out, or full capacity, I guess?
Correct, correct.
So you don't know, correct me if I'm wrong, if this was built in a year, how many spots would actually be needed for employees at this time?
No, again, we're speaking in terms of fully utilized.
Okay. I believe this was already discussed, but just quickly on the height. I understand your testimony about the taller the building, the better, because you need less, I guess, what is it, square foot coverage, because you can go up instead of out.
Correct.
But you could still have an operating warehouse of 35 feet, is that correct?
You could have an operating building of any size. The comment was, buildings presently are being developed, on average, 36 to 40 feet usable, not to be confused with the exterior height, which is what the zoning comes into play. I'm talking about usable interior height. The industry standard is 36 to 40 feet.
How many years have you been, you might have said this already, how many years have you been dealing with warehouses?
2007.
And how familiar are you with sort of the history of warehouses in the sense of how they've changed over the last few decades?
Despite not being there to witness the trend, you have the existing inventory of those buildings, and you see the different levels of functionality of those buildings. I mean, I tell you, prime example, a lot of the older buildings were built when the maximum trailer length was 40 feet. So as a result, the depth of that loading area is 90 feet. You know, now they're being built to 130 feet. So just to accommodate the longer trailers, the longer cabs. So, you know, can those older buildings exist? Yes, but they have some functional challenges. And same goes with ceiling height.
And if you can, can you walk me through maybe, you know, in the 80s, what was a warehouse like? Or approximately that time? It doesn't have to be exact, I know you don't.
Conceptually, it was similar. As costs have increased, there's been more innovation, things ranging from the handling equipment, the forklifts, going from 12-foot aisles between racking on standard to moving to narrow rack, meaning you have different equipment, it picks differently, you need less space in between those racks. As a result, you get more pallet positions within the building. So I mean, there's incremental efficiencies to ceiling height, there's change in sprinkler systems where, you know, this is designed with ESFR, that's kind of the new gold standard, much more robust than the older systems that were, you know, different levels of ordinary hazards. I mean, there's a host of different progressions.
And you also mentioned a moment ago, the change in the length of trucks, for example?
Correct.
Because that's gone, I think, from 40 feet to maybe-
40 to 53.
And 53 was in the 80s and 90s?
You have the sleeper cabs, the trucks and so forth, so yes.
And then now, I think that standards, I don't want to testify, is it like 67, 70 feet? Is that sort of how big trucks are over the last?
The 53 is the maximum trailer length.
Maximum trailer length?
Correct. Correct. And I should add, the containers are typically 20 or 40 feet, as opposed to 53.
How have the, just generally speaking, how have the uses of warehouses changed over time? I think we've already talked about this a little bit with the Amazon and things like that, but can you go into, if you know, you know, sort of the incremental changes from over the last few decades of-
The general function remains the same, it's storage of goods. You know, what has changed is instead of the bulk of the inventory being pulled into one giant warehouse and sent to Sears and JCPenney and Macy's, a lot of that same product is in a building where it's being pulled and then sent directly to FedEx, UPS, DHL, so forth.
I wanted to go over your, just briefly, I know it was already asked, but is the only professional license you have, a realtor's license?
Correct.
Where'd you go to college?
Went to Arcadia University.
What was your major?
I was business.
Are you a professional planner?
No.
How many land use boards have you appeared before in the state of New Jersey?
I can't say I have, no, but it's not been required of me.
So this will be the first one?
Correct.
I don't have any further questions. I just want to note, I guess to the chairman, that Mr. Scott, while a knowledgeable person, was not qualified as an expert, and I don't believe, respectfully, he should be qualified as an expert in operations, based on the testimony we've heard today.
Respectfully, can I ask what the standard is you're trying to achieve?
Well, the standard for an expert is based both on your experience, your education, and whatever licenses you may have. And again, I mean, no offense.
No, I understand. Can you specify which licenses that you're seeking?
I, again, I'm the one asking the questions respectfully, but it's up to the board to decide, and Mr. Bernstein to give the board there his advice.
Okay. Just for whatever it's worth, there's not a broad curriculum, so to speak, in our industry of accreditations.
Thank you.
Mr. Bernstein just wants to weigh on, I guess, what was raised by the objector, and I want to ignore his request, but just want to get some guidance.
I'm unaware, he's been presented as an expert in the field, and I don't believe Mr. O'Grady has presented him as that. I think he's presented him as an individual involved in the logistics of the proposed application, and I think the board should accept the testimony he's been provided, under the conditions he's been presented, and draw its own conclusions.
I think I concur. I mean, my impression was he was going to be testifying on the operations of the business itself, and would have a knowledge of the business itself.
Well, it's permitted use. We're not really here to talk about the business that-
Well, the operation part of it.
Well, we provided hours of operations, numbers of employees. You know, these are the types of questions that planning boards ask applicants.
No, I understand, I understand, it's whether-
Mr. Chairman, actually, a lot of these questions were asked because the applicant indicated that he relied on his logistics person, and you made the determination to introduce his logistics person as a witness here.
We were requested to introduce a logistics professional.
Based upon the applicant's testimony.
Correct.
It was your call to whether or not you chose to provide, you did. You provided it in the context in which you provided it, and the board will review the testimony in that context.
I'm just unclear on what additional testimony we can give, other than the owner, the engineer, the noise expert, the traffic expert, the planner, the architect.
Michael, actually, this is not the time nor the place to have that conversation. The issue relates to this individual and his testimony.
We would be happy-
We're not stating that we're going to disqualify him for what, for how he's been-
Chairman said we'd accept it.
I'm just trying to understand what questions you want answered, and we'll answer them.
The answer, Mr. O'Grady, I think is going to determine, based on the total context of the testimony, and the board being asked at some point to look at it, both the testimony you provided, the testimony the objectors have provided, and possibly the public, and at that point, they may or may not ask for any of all parties to present additional material. At this point, you're presenting your case.
If I could jump in-
My suggestion, Mr. Scott, with all due respect, is stop while you're ahead.
My suggestion is that you let me present my witnesses and let them answer questions, and not dictate the order of my witnesses.
No one has dictated the order of your witnesses.
Maybe not in this application.
All right. We're drifting. All right, you're done with questions, we're done with questions, I'm going to ask for a motion to open the public. Well, in favor? All right, okay. If there's anyone from the public that would like to question across examining this witness on his testimony, please come up. And I know we got a little bit of a late start, so I'm going to allow public questioning go to about 5 after 10, and then we're probably going to have to continue at that point, so.
Thank you. Brian Tarrant- Brian Tarantino, Fairfield Lane. So, Mr. Scott, you testified that you expected this warehouse to produce nominal traffic. Nominal is the word you used, is that right?
I'm going to object to that question, we're going to rely on our traffic testimony.
I'm going to overrule that, because your traffic engineer relied on your applicant to tell him how many trucks were coming in and out, and I believe that is where you were headed to, was the number of trucks entering and leaving.
I am, thank you, I am, Mr. Chairman...
Just say yes or no if I was right.
Yeah, I'm getting there, but there was a, Mr. Scott made a comment about, I believe that this is just nominal traffic, so I'm just speaking to the testimony that he provided.
Relative to other industrial users.
Okay.
So, that's a broad spectrum. I know everyone likes to think of Amazon with the, I think I cited the 400 vans speeding out in the parking lot, I always meant to put it in context.
And your rating of the traffic as nominal is based on what scale, and, you know, based on what?
I wasn't intending to provide a metric, I was just contrasting to another hypothetical user who would have a higher volume.
And there's no hypothetical users that would have a lower volume?
I'm sure there is.
So how did you come up with nominal, then? I mean, if nominal means it's the lowest...
Mr. Tarantino, I'm going to stand for a moment like Mr. O'Grady, you've asked and answered the question, he indicated, move on.
I have a few other questions, so I can...
Please do.
...move on. So, let's talk about operations for a second, and I will skip all of the questions that have already been answered. So, the inbound, I'll do my best to skip those, so the inbound are containers from the port, and you've testified, and Mr. Arif also testified, that they would drop off full containers, and then the truck driver would either take an empty back if one was ready, isn't that right?
Correct.
Now, if one wasn't ready, what would that driver do?
I imagine they would return to the port.
Okay, so, and how long might he stay? I mean, based on your knowledge of logistics and shipping, how long would that driver likely stay? Would he stay 10 minutes, an hour, eight hours? How long would he wait for an empty to be ready?
I would expect if it was not ready at that time, he would return.
Okay, so, 10 full trucks coming in, let's be generous and say, five of those, five of those drivers would take empties back, okay, but then five drivers would leave with just the cab, right?
It's speculative.
Yeah, I mean, that's, in that hypothetical, you're creating the hypothetical, so I can't disagree with it.
Okay, so then that would be 10 trips coming in, and then five going out, and then five more going out.
These are hypothetical, I'll defer to the traffic.
Mr. Tarantino, let's not draw hypotheticals, just ask questions, okay?
Okay, so what you're saying is that for the inbound, it's, if there isn't an empty ready to go, then that driver would likely leave with just the cab?
Correct, that's certainly possible.
And then when that, when a truck is empty, he would have to come back to pick up that empty?
Unless he was delivering a full container.
Right. Now, on the outbound, you mentioned that it could be, you know, FedEx, that FedEx would come and drop off an empty truck. Now, would that FedEx driver then leave with a full, or would he just leave?
The most efficient way would be to exchange, but I mean, I can't speak to the volume that's going in and out in that truck.
But there would have to be another, there had to be a full FedEx truck, because he wouldn't pick up a UPS, right?
Correct.
Okay, so...
So, I can't tell you what the primary carrier is going to be, whether it's UPS, whether it's FedEx, it's going to be dependent on whatever's the most cost effective at that time for that package.
Well, I believe you testified, and correct me if I'm wrong, that you said, you know, there would be FedEx there, UPS, DHL, so you suggested there'd be quite a variety of shippers.
That's not uncommon, again, I mean, I can't speak to which of those three or four, whether it's all together, whether it's three out of the four, I, you know, we're looking three years ahead.
Okay, so on the outbound, we're talking about trucks coming in, you know, six to 10 coming in, and then the cabs leaving without a truck, and then the cabs coming back, and then taking the full truck set back, isn't that right?
I'm going to point you back to traffic.
No, no, sorry, he pointed me to you, I asked the same question of him, and he said, you'll have to talk to the operations guy, so don't bounce me around, please.
The, if your question is the total trips, I think that was addressed by traffic. It could come in different variation of times a day, we're speaking in averages of how we would expect it to work.
Yeah, in a day, what Mr. Arif testified was, there would be six to 10 trucks leaving, and, you know, given the fact that we don't have, well, anyway, I'm trying, I don't want to testify, so...
That's what we're expecting, I feel like what you're trying to ask me is, what is the exact number on an exact day?
No, I'm not asking that, I'm saying that when you use a number like 10, six to 10, we're really talking about 40, because there's 10 coming in, right, there's 10 coming in...
I'm not going to agree with the 40.
Okay, but for one truck, it's a trip coming in, he has to get, right, and then the cab leaves, that's another trip, right?
I don't believe that's how Mr. Dean described it. One trip is in and out.
No, that's not true, that's not correct, sorry.
I don't think we're going to get agreement, I would, please go to the next question, because...
And you're not always leaving empty, Mr. Tarantino, you're assuming you're leaving empty every time.
Well, we, Mr. Scott just testified that UPS wouldn't be taking a FedEx truck away.
He didn't say that.
So, you mentioned that the, that the number of docks is, that you basically max out the number of docks based on the geometry of the building, is what I kind of heard. Does that sound about right? There was a lot of talk about it, but you said, depending on the geometry of the building, that's how many docks we would put in?
In some contexts, I mean, if 20 are available, I don't see the logic in building 18, if that's your question.
Yes, that is, thank you. And then, you said you were an expert in a lot of different things about these docks. What is the approximate cost of equipping the dock with the equipment needed for the truck to actually dock with it? You know, there's like a lift, and then there's a warning light, and there's...
There's ballpark 20,000.
Okay.
I mean, you're dealing with a nine-by-10 door, a leveller, there's different types of levellers, there's edge of dock, there's, you know, in kind of recessed, different types, different capacities, there's dock shelters for different food-grade buildings, I mean, there's a lot of variables, but if I had to try to give you a really simple number, 20,000.
Okay, so 20 times 20,000 is what the applicant would be spending to equip these docks, is that right?
I imagine it would be in that ballpark, yes.
Okay, great. You mentioned that Mr. Mayhew was trying to get to the turn rate of the dock. What I got from your testimony, and just correct me if I'm wrong, was that they're incentivized to turn the dock quickly, because they're paying money for the truck.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
So, it would be, it would be most beneficial to be able to turn that very quickly?
It would be most efficient not to have a tractor sit unnecessarily in a parking lot.
Great, and for a, based on your expertise, what is the typical turn rate for, and I'll give you the, I know it's hypothetical, sorry, but let's assume the material comes in on a pallet.
Can you stay away from the hypotheticals and please just ask the question, you've asked, that's been addressed a couple times with you, so please understand that.
Got it, yes, sir. So, how long would it take, not hypothetical, this is a real situation, how long do you think it would take to load the truck on pallets?
Assuming the pallets are ready, okay? Right, assuming the pallets were sitting next to the dock?
Yep.
30, 40 minutes.
30, 40 minutes, great.
Assuming the, again, that the pallets have already been picked, staged, grouped, et cetera.
Yeah, great, thank you. You mentioned about the parking spaces, and that sometime, you know, one of the reuses of that parking space is, if a truck shows up and there isn't a spot for it, then they might park it in the parking lot, full of material, right, that's come from the port.
Hypothetically?
Is that hypothetical, or are you...
No, I think the scenario is hypothetical, in which case, yes, I mean, it's inbound container, I...
Okay, and so how long would the materials be stored in that, I mean, based on your knowledge of the operation that Mr. Arif is planning?
The concept is to move it and unload it into the building as quickly as possible, so that would be a very short duration.
All right, so you might be able to get away with far fewer parking spaces, then, it sounds like.
I mean, can, there's not a, there's not an exact answer to that, there could be less, but what we're trying to avoid is having a parking lot that has, you know, more things in it than belongs. We're trying to avoid any congestion, you know, there's easier maneuverability in parking every other space versus, you know, like the other, I mean, there's a level of efficiency in that setup.
Okay, and based on your knowledge of the operation, do you have an idea of, I apologize if this has been asked, but do you have an idea of how many spots of the 28 would be occupied, you know, typically?
The concept is that would be a peak level, that it would not be continuous.
So, on a continuous basis, I mean, on an average basis, it would be very few, it sounds like?
I would expect so, yes.
Okay. You testified that, gee, it's really, would be hard to move out of the warehouse, and that typically it's a five or 10-year lease, isn't that right?
Correct.
Okay, in this particular situation, though, Mr. Arif would be leasing it from himself, isn't that right?
Mr. Arif has an interest in both the business and the real estate, they are not equally aligned, there's different business partners on different sides, so, yes, there's a relationship, but yes, there's an element to a little bit more arms-length than he owns 100% of one, 100% of the other.
Okay, but it might be a little easier if he's got at least a partial interest, is that, would that be fair to say?
Can you repeat the question?
It might be a little bit easier, since he's got a partial interest in ownership of the warehouse, to change his lease, it would be easier than if he had no ownership interest, is that fair?
I don't, that's up to he and his business partners.
I know it is, but I'm asking you, based on your professional opinion...
I don't, I don't think that's a logistics question, I think that's...
No, but it's like real estate, it's a real estate question, and that's, you're a Realtor, right?
That's a discussion for he and his business partners, I could ask you the question of, would he want a vacant building? You can make the same question on both sides, is why would he want to vacate his building?
My specific question was, does it make it easier, based on your knowledge of real estate?
Short answer is no.
Doesn't make it any easier?
I do not think it makes any easier, the physical costs to move an operation are very substantial.
Okay, that's all I had, thank you.
Perfect, it's 5 after. So just real quick, I just want to see, were there anyone else from the public that was going to have planned, okay, that just lets me know that we need him back, so.
No.
So we may have others, so, and there'll be follow-up, yeah, okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, we're not ready to call this a day yet.
Well, what an interesting point in the road. The time of decision rule, the time of decision agreement for this application is June 30th. There are currently two applications scheduled for the next two board meetings, and neither of which are this application. So, we turn to the applicant's counsel as to what his plans are or not relative to the application.
Well, I have the benefit of representing all these applicants, so...
Not all of them, but most of them.
So, for 279 Homestead, we're going to, again, request an adjournment, which is scheduled for next week, which frees up that date for Weston Road. It's the only application that can appear without, on that short notice.
That, obviously, you're going to come back in next week on 279, just to make the formal request.
Correct, I'll be here.
So the question now becomes, A, do you have witnesses available for next week?
I've already pre-checked that, and we will finish with Mr. Scott, and then we'll move to Steve in Architecture and conclude our testimony with Tom Offenard and Kenan Hughes.
Okay, next question, are the objectors available next Thursday night?
I am available, but I don't believe our experts are, or at least I know the one that's here is not, I don't think that's going to matter, based on the pace that this is going, but I...
You both will be here.
I am also available.
I would suggest that you might want to have somebody potentially available amongst your experts to be here. I would not necessarily disagree with the concept of the pace, but anything is possible. It still will, what we're doing, Mr. Chairman, is ostensibly kicking the can down the proverbial road a week. So, I'm assuming, Mr. O'Grady, one of the things you will be addressing next week, depending on where we are, is where we go from here. I'm not looking for an answer tonight. So, the board is being requested to continue this application without further notice until 7 o'clock, Thursday, June 8, or soon thereafter, as the matter may be heard, without further notice for this application.
And I just want to just ask the objectors' counsel, other than the one witness that's here tonight, do you have others to present, or plan to present?
We do, and, but I don't, I have to admit, I was not anticipating that next Thursday was going to be on the table, because I, we knew the other application was there, so I don't honestly know if he's available either. We will do everything we can, and like I said, I don't...
I know, with the pace and all, I'm just trying to set up that I think everyone needs to expect, to see that that time of decision is going to have to be addressed most likely next week. I'm, for one, would be betting against that we would not need to extend it, so, yeah, so I think, you know, everyone should be prepared next week to discuss that. And also, I would suggest to also start to find dates for, other dates for your respective witnesses, or their availability, because I do not feel next week is going to be the conclusion.
We'll find out next week.
So, all right, so there's a motion, or, can I have a motion to continue this application to next week, as Mr. Bernstein outlined the date and time, without further notice?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Sorry, who is the second?
Chickarelli.
Just for our recording secretary?
Yep.
Okay.
You got it?
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Rattner?
Yes.
Pizzi?
Yes.
Scovio?
Yes.
Radowitz?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Chirelli?
Yes.
Chair's arrived.
Yes.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, and as everyone's well aware, we do have a meeting next week, so it looks like the same group, so with that, I will entertain a motion of adjournment.
Go move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned, see everyone next week. Good night.